I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have all board members with the exception of Mr. Piorian in attendance this evening. Does anyone on the board have any announcements before we turn it over to Dr. Hicks?
My, thank you. I'd just like to thank CSEP, the CTA, Clarence Credit Union, as well as Crosby's for an exceptional faculty basketball game last Friday. There was over 1,100 attendees, and that did not include the staff that participated. So it was a very successful event. And of course, Tricia for always organizing it and keeping it on track. Thank you so much. And Liz?
Sweetie Robert?
Is it not working?
Sweetie Robert?
Oh. Okay. I just thanked everybody, the CTA, Tricia, Clarence Credit Union, Crosby's for the faculty basketball event that was held on Friday. There were 1,100 people in attendance, and it was a very successful event and raised money for CSEP. So thanks, everyone, including Liz and Tricia for organizing it. That's it.
All right. Dr. Hicks, what is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. This is our third budget study session, and it's the last budget study session prior to the April board meeting where the board will vote to adopt a budget. For this agenda, we have an update on the New York State budget process, and the budget process is rapidly coming to a close, although there are no resolutions yet as to the numbers for state aid. We're going to give the third draft to the Board of Education of the 2017-18 Clarence Bu-- oops, I should say 18-19. Sorry. Third draft to the 18-19 budget. We're going to review one more time the tax levy and rate information. And this is the meeting where we provide the community with five-year budget projections for revenue and expenditure, along with the three-part budget that's mandated by New York State. So this chart shows the status of the New York State budget so far. In January, the governor came out with his budget. The governor's budget increased aid to education by $769 million, 338 million of which was foundation aid. The governor created a brand-new formula to distribute that money, guaranteeing that every district would receive some type of increase from as low as a quarter of 1% to as high as 6 or 7%. Clarence fell on the very low end of the allocation in the governor's budget at a quarter of 1%. The governor provides in his original budget $56 million in increases for rebates and tuition for charter schools. The governor did fully fund expense-driven aid in his budget. Expense-driven aids are BOSI's, special education, transportation. We spend money one year, we get money back the next year. However, the governor had a proposal to cap future expense-driven aids at 2%. There were some other pieces of the governor's budget, an after-school program, expanded universal pre-K, transferring some money for special education students from traditionally where New York State spent it back to school districts as well. So the governor's proposal has been out there for a couple of months. We've analyzed it. We've talked with our board and our community about it. Two weeks ago, the Assembly and the Senate came out with their one-house budgets, which is another step in the process towards trying to find an adopted budget. The Assembly put additional dollars for their proposal for education aid. The Assembly one-house budget is $1.5 billion as an increase to education, instead of 338 million where the governor was, 1.2 billion in foundation aid. The Assembly also calls for a four-year phase-in of foundation aid, as it was written under the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuit. So for Clarence, that could mean if the Assembly budget actually came true with the foundation aid formula, that could mean another $800,000 over the next four years. The Assembly budget rejects additional funding for charter school. It fully funds expense-driven aids and rejects a cap, and it allows for a couple of other things in their proposal. One would be a reserve for the teachers' retirement system. That would be helpful to Clarence. Another would be to increase the aidable limit on BOSI's teachers' salary. That would also be a benefit for us. It also includes amnesty for loss of building aid due to minor clerical errors. We don't really ever have minor clerical errors in Clarence, but there are some school districts who make an error and they have to wait 10 years to get money paid back. This would rectify that. And it would allow BOSI's capital expense to be an exemption to the tax cap. We pay for building at the BOSI centers, as do all of the other schools in the Erie One BOSI's. We could use our share towards that as an exemption to the cap if this particular proposal comes true in the adopted budget. The Senate budget is also different than the governor's. They're just under $1 billion for an education aid increase, 717 million of which would be foundation aid. They also would come up with a new formula. They would eliminate the charter school cap and increase money to charter schools. They also reject the cap on expense-based aids. The Senate budget proposal has a school safety and security package for grant programs to fund things like mental health providers and school resource officers. That would help Clarence as well. And the Senate also has amnesty for building aid due to minor clerical errors. So right now, it's leaders from the Assembly, the Senate, and the governor battling it out on the budget. And the word that we've gotten, we-- last week, Matt Stock and I met with our Assemblyman, Assemblyman Norris. Passover comes next week. The budget, if it's going to be done on time, probably has to be done this Thursday at the latest. So we'll see. If the budget is completed at the New York State level, we normally get a school aid run directly after that, and we would get that information to the board prior to the time that you adopt the budget. If there is an increase in state aid, the board can make choices on what to do with those increased dollars. You can use it to reduce the tax levy, or you can use it to fund some of the programs that are up for recommendation. Some revenue assumptions for our 2018-19 budget. We were counting on more aid from New York State. So far in the governor's budget, we've only received about $35,000 worth of additional aid in foundation aid for next year. We need some more to balance the budget. We're likely to get a little bit more. We're having our sales tax revenue increase by 2% in next year's budget. That's consistent with what it's been over the past couple of years. Our local revenues will remain flat. That's interest rates, payment in lieu of taxes for commercial properties that have a deal with the Chamber, and miscellaneous sources. Our appropriated fund balance and appropriated reserves may increase if the state aid remains very low, but probably will stay the same next year. And for the revenue, we have a recommended tax levy of 3.9%. The 3.9% recommendation is much lower than the tax cap threshold for Clarence, and we'll review what the tax levy limit is as opposed to the recommended tax levy. That levy would generate about $1.8 million. The Board of Ed makes the final decision on where to set the tax levy at their April meeting. On the expense side, our wages were anticipated to go up by 3%, but now they will be lower due to the teacher retirement incentive that we negotiated with the Teachers Association. We had 22 teachers retire. Our retirement system costs are up. Workers' compensation is up by approximately 5%. Health insurance, special education costs, debt service due to the new capital project as there is an offset on state aid for that particular increase in debt service. Our costs at BOSI's are up. And all other costs, utilities, supplies, equipment, up about 1%. Some program assumptions for the 2018-19 school year. Our program goals always are to not reduce any staff and to maintain or improve all existing programs, which is what this budget does. The recommendations on program are to add to the budget for student mental health supports and school safety elements. We have convened a task force of community members who will study the best practices for student health, mental supports, and school safety elements. They will make a recommendation to the Board of Ed at their June meeting. If the Board of Ed wants to hold over money to spend on either people or equipment for school safety and mental health supports, they can choose to do that in this particular budget. That's the recommendation of the administration. This is the way the tax levy is capped. The actual limit number is calculated. You go through all of these additions and equations, and what you end up with at the end is the maximum levy after exemptions for Clarence. So the maximum levy for Clarence this year, the absolute cap number, would be 4.71%. The recommendation is not to set the actual levy at 4.71%, even though that's the limit number for this particular year. The recommendation is to set it lower than 4.7, at 3.9%, which is well below the cap. So the levy, from a definition standpoint, is the amount of money that's raised via property taxes as a revenue in the school budget, and it's determined by subtracting all of our other spending from other sources of revenue in the budget. Our tax rate, we're estimating at this point at $14.95 per thousand if your house is reassessed. We've been informed by the Clarence assessor that notices for reassessment, is it this week that they're going out, Rick?
Yes.
That it will, that those notices will go out this week. So we have tried to guess and build in what the reassessed value would be when we try to make a determination of a dollar-per-thousand number. This number is bound to be lower at the end when the board makes the final determination on it in August. But remember, there's a difference between tax levy and tax rate. Rate is, the tax rate is impacted by the total assessed value in the towns that make up the school district. And when those, when that total assessed value goes up, the rate comes down. And we've been told by the assessor that the total assessed valuation is up, significantly So this chart shows you historically what we've publicized in April with the budget and then what the tax rate actually was set at when August comes around. And we can't set the exact tax rate until we get all of the numbers from the assessor. But in every year from 2003, 2004 up until now, the actual dollar amount that was set in August was much lower than what we publicized in April. And we anticipate that this will be the same this year as well. The difference will be, even though the rate will be lower, it likely will be lower than last year's rate, if your house is reassessed, the value of your home will go up, so the amount of school taxes you pay will also likely go up. It's difficult for us to guesstimate exactly what will happen with the assessed valuations increase across the town of Clarence. We have conversations with the assessor. He talks to us in generalities, but none of this information is completely clear until the summer. When the board meets in August, it will establish the rate based on the information that we get from the assessor. Right now, this is our estimate if you apply an anticipated increase in home value. If you're one of the lucky people across Clarence who does not get their home reassessed, it's pretty much a dead-set certainty that the amount of school taxes that you'll pay next year are lower than what you would pay this year. But trying to have full disclosure and be completely transparent, we're building in an anticipated increase into this particular tax rate. So we think that on a $100,000 home at 3.9%, at a $14.95 per thousand rate, it will be about $36 additional taxes for school on a $100,000 home. $72 on a $200,000 home, $109 on a $300,000 home. And again, if your house is not reassessed, these numbers will not be the same. If your house is reassessed, and it's reassessed at approximately the same rate as the rest of the houses in Clarence, it will be this rate. The Property Tax Relief Credit Program is still in effect and was in the governor's budget and is likely to be in the adopted budget. The Property Tax Relief Credit essentially pays people back for their increases in school taxes. You get a check from New York State right around late October. So in order to, in order for you to get the check on your increased school taxes, the school district has to certify that the tax levy is within the levy limit. Remember, our limit number is 4.7%. The recommended tax levy for the Board of Education to adopt is 3.9%. So we've already certified that we're well within the tax levy limit. Secondly, in order to qualify for the rebate, you have to meet these particular conditions that are established by New York State. One, you have to live in the school district that's complying with the tax levy limit law, and if you live in the Clarence School District, you do. Second, you need to receive either basic or enhanced star property tax relief, and almost all of our homeowners do. And you have to have an annual income of $275,000 or less. If you meet those criteria, you will get rebated back the increase in taxes for the 2018-19 budget. So a summary of where we're at so far. We're recommending the levy at 3.9%, which is lower, and I'll say significantly lower, than the cap level. We are recommending some additions to the budget for school safety and mental health supports. We don't have the exact definition of what those supports and school safety elements will be yet, but we do have a task force that's working on it, and we're asking the Board of Education to consider putting in a placeholder of sorts for those funds. The 22 teacher retirements are built into this budget, and at least half of the savings from that retire, from those retirements went towards lowering the tax levy. Wages were anticipated to go up 3%, but now are lower due to the retirements, and these were some of the expenses that we reviewed before that are normal increases year-over-year. We are also recommending the proposition to purchase six buses--
Ten.
Oops, sorry, 10 buses to maintain our 11- to 12-year replacement rate for our fleet. Because we have purchased buses for five years in a row, there is no impact on the tax levy with this particular bus proposal. So this is the meeting, this is the budget meeting where we provide the community and the board with a five-year look ahead. So this is what we're looking ahead as far as revenue projections are concerned. And built into these particular assumptions, as you look at the next five years, a 2% annual increase in sales tax, and that's actually conservative, and we've been right within that number. We're lucky enough to live in a county that shares sales tax with school districts. Our local revenues are anticipated to remain flat, maybe a small increase in payment in lieu of taxes for some commercial property. The tax levy that we've built into this particular scenario is a rise of about 3% per year, and that would include anticipated exemptions to the levy. The fund balance in this particular scenario remains relatively flat. We may need to use fund balance and debt reserve to balance the budget in 2022 when nearly $1 million of net debt is retired. And then the state aid increases here are here based on the historical increased amount, not necessarily based on just this year, but based on the past five to 10 years. So as you look across, you can see the numbers for sales tax, local revenues, fund balance, tax levy, and all of the New York State aids. On the expense side, when you take a look at the five-year projections, you can see wages, supplies, contractual equipment, BOSI's benefits, and debt service. We have built into these particular scenarios about a 3% annual wage increase for the bargaining units. Benefits are anticipated to rise 4% to 5% annually. The retirement systems are starting to go back up a little bit rather than coming down as they have been for the past five or six years. Contractual and supply expenses, about 2% increase. BOSI's and special ed, about 3% increase per year. And our debt service is stable. We're in the process of bonding our most recent capital project now. We will get corresponding revenue back from New York State for that, and in 2022, one of our debt issues will fall off, and then we will have to reexamine that debt service line. So that's a five-year look at the expense side, a five-year look at the revenue side. By New York State law, we have to provide the community with the budget in three parts. So that's what this particular slide is all about. It shows you this year's administrative and capital costs, next year's administrative and capital costs, and what the proposed change is for this particular budget. Of course, these are small costs compared to the instructional cost, which is fully $59.7 million of the $80 million budget. So this is the same thing for the instructional program, regular ed, special programs, transportation, and benefits. So if you take a look at the increases year-over-year, or I'm sorry, if you take a look at the, this is not increase, this is percentage of the total budget. If you take a look at the percentage of the total budget, administrative costs are about 7.5% of the total budget this year. They're about that next year as well. Capital costs, slight increase for next year. Program costs, slight decrease for next year, mostly attributable to the fact that we have larger numbers of retirements. So that's a look at the budget in the way that we legally have to provide it and that we will have in the budget newsletter that gets sent home in about a month. Whenever we have a budget presentation, we kind of end with a summary slide. So this is the summary. This year's budget is $80.2 million. Our recommended tax levy increase is 3.9%, which will provide about another $1.8 million in revenue. Other sources of revenue increase will be about $1 million. Next year's budget total, $83.1 million. This is a summary of our bus purchase plan that we've talked about at length at other board meetings. Basically, we're on a 10- to 12-year replacement cycle for our approximately 100 vehicles. Next year, seven large buses, two medium-sized buses, and a Suburban, which we use for out-of-district bus runs. We get a little bit of money by trading in some of our older buses. The grand total amount, about $930,000, borrowed over five years and paid back. So, so far this year, we had a open budget study session on January 29th. We had one on February 26th, and this is our third and final open budget study session for March 26th. We've had our regular board meeting in February. We've had our regular board meeting in March. The next time this Board of Education convenes is March, or I'm sorry, April 16th. April 16th will be the time when the board adopts the budget. On May 7th, we have the annual budget hearing, which is mandated by New York State, and then a week later, everyone across New York State votes on the budget on that particular So, board members, that's an update on where we stand as of March 26th. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, or we can have the community ask questions as well.
Well, just one, one point of clarity, at least for myself, right out the gate, right out of the gate. It was discussed in a previous meeting, and you, you mentioned the debt service, but just to circle back to that, maybe, Rick, if you can confirm the order of magnitude. But the reason the levy is, calculation is so high at 4.7, one and a half to 1.7% of that relates to the bonding of the project that was approved in 2014, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The capital project that was approved in 2014 is just culminating now, and we will be bonding the balance of the $33 million in June. And as we know, the capital project, when it was approved, there's about a two-thirds state funding, but one-third local funding. And that one-third local funding will be kicking in now. So the first year it kicks in, there's always going to be a little bit increase to the tax cap. Then, as the other slides show, over the years, it stays flat, so there'll be no tax cap fluctuation after that.
So then, to kind of put it in context of the 3.9 that's being recommended as far as the tax levy being recommended, the board, another way to look at it is, again, like 1.6% of that is relating to the debt service, which we have that obligation. It was approved years ago. It's just here. And then the balance of about 2.3 is what the increase is relating to operating the day-to-day business.
Correct. And one of the slides that Dr. Hicks has that shows the tax levy cap calculation is a good slide because the second line down shows that the town's growth factor is 1.4%. So what that really means is, on a tax levy increase of 3.9, only 2.5 of that, the 3.9 minus 1.4, only 2.5 of that will actually affect a current homeowner.
Any other questions, board members?
Can open it up?
Okay, we'll open it up to our community. If you could just step to the mic and answer that question, please.
Hi, everybody. Josh Bowers. I have six kids, number six of whom will be of school age this fall. So five kids in three different schools in the district here. I am part of the school safety task force, so I'd like to kind of drill down on what Dr. Hicks said previously. I'd like to hear specifically from the board, because I think Mr. Mancuso and Dr. Hicks have made it very clear that really they support what we're, what we're doing in the task force, and in fact, look forward to presenting to the board in June some ideas. But specifically, you know, how will that be funded, and what are, what are some feelings from the board on that topic?
I'll just make an opening comment and then open it up. At the last budget study session, there was a proposal put forth to the board of a couple hundred thousand dollars. Okay, can you hear me now? There, there was a recommendation to set aside in a couple buckets, I believe three buckets, some money for technology, professional development, and staffing. What has been, changes that have been recommended is to take those funds and instead of earmarking for those purposes, to earmark them for safety initiatives and allow some flexibility as we set the budget to hear the recommendations that'll occur in June and then act on them with funding in place. And I believe it was, correct me if I'm wrong--
I've got $370,000 of the retirement incentive remains in the budget draft for those items.
Yep. I think collectively, we've all supported the, the task force and look forward to hearing some of the recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So ballpark, 375 is what we're talking at this point?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we appreciate that. Obviously, I don't speak on behalf of the task force. I'm a concerned dad. That's why I volunteered--
Yep.
--for the task force and based on my professional area of expertise, very, very interested in giving input there. Just want to, I guess, make, make a comment, and I'll sit down. And that, that simply, I felt, all right, somewhat one of these cyber stalkers, okay, I watch you guys online, watched the, the previous budget meeting, and it seemed to me there were several outspoken individuals on, on this very topic. Okay, I'm not sure if anyone else is going to speak on this topic tonight, but-- Okay, I'm not sure if anyone else is going to speak on this topic tonight, but school safety is a thing, right? Like, this is probably the thing going on in our society right now. And last month in particular, I don't know, I felt like we got a lot of lip service on this topic. I don't need to point anyone out, but it just seemed to me that there's several people outspoken from the standpoint of we feel our kids are sitting ducks, and not enough has been done on this topic. I think if we look at the recent history, you know, the school resource officer thing took, literally took years to happen, okay? And we got one, great, Mike Ballow, great, great guy, and I have a peace of mind with my kids coming to the high school because he's here, like truly, I do, that's a great thing. And I know that, you know, we've been told he makes rounds and all that good stuff. Bottom line is, we have five, what, you know, five buildings that are, you know, need a Mike Ballow, is what it comes down to, okay? And I'm, again, I'm not going to get ahead of what the task force is going to recommend, but just simply want to say that there's been a lot of lip service given to this topic, and respectfully, I would like to see more done going forward. And how do you, how do you all do this? Well, you all do this by throwing some money at this problem. And again, if you look at the history, a lot of money thrown at capital improvements, again, necessary, leaky roofs, all that good stuff, necessary, right? Same thing with athletic fields, okay? I'm a Clarence High School graduate, okay, athlete of the year 1996, I'm all for sports, big proponent of sports, but you know, we're looking at, what, $80 million budget, and we're talking about a couple hundred grand. So, want to see that push through for sure, and hopefully going forward as well, even more dedicated to this topic, really to protect not only our kids, right, but our teachers and our staff as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to give feedback.
Thanks, Mr. Bowers. Any other community members would like to address the board or have a question answered?
Can I just ask my question from here?
Sure.
The tax rate, is that before the assessment or after the assessment?
Right. So, the tax rate is an estimation of what would happen after the reassessment, okay? The actual rate number is going to be, we think, lower than this year's number, but we're trying to build into it a reassessed value on a home and not say to somebody, "Your school taxes wouldn't increase if your home was reassessed," okay? Thank you. Yes, Ms. Corcoran?
If the tax gap is supposed to be 2%, how do you arrive at 4.71 or 3.9%?
So, the start point for the tax cap is the cost of living increase over the course of one year in New York State. This year, the start point was 2%. Other years, it's been lower than that. It can never go higher than that, even if the cost of living increase was higher than that. So, the start point is 2%. Then, there are other factors that impact on the calculation of the cap. One factor is the growth in the town. So, that's going to add about a point.
1.4.
1.4%. Another factor is previously approved capital projects that the community already said yes to with the anticipation that those dollars would be in a future budget. So, when you take those two things and put them in as additions and exemptions, that's how it goes from 2% to 4.7%. But I just want to point out, Ms. Corcoran, that we're not recommending that we go all the way to the cap. We're recommending 3.9%, which is lower than the cap.
But isn't that variable based on the assessment, then?
Actually, no. When the first, the first element is cost of living. The second element on, in the town, is based on new builds. It's based on new homes and new businesses that are added to the assessment rolls, not on the reassessment of existing homes.
Does that add revenue?
No.
Do you have a building?
No. When you, when you have new homes and new businesses that come in to the district, what happens is, the levy itself is apportioned out over a larger pie of assessment. So, the rate comes down, but the actual number that you have to raise in money, that's the levy. We take money we get, revenue we get from all other sources, subtract it from the budget, and whatever's left is the levy. So, from an impact standpoint, when people's assessed value goes up, the rate comes down.
This is always super confusing to me when I started this. I'm going to try a ridiculous analogy, and we'll see if this helps anybody. I mean, I think of, think of the tax levy, if we wanted to go buy pizza, right? So, if we wanted to buy pizza, the pizza costs as much as the pizza costs, if it's 30, let's just call it $30 for a sheet pizza, right? That's the levy. We need to come up with $30. How many people participate in buying it determines how much every individual pays, right? So, that's actually how it gets distributed, and that's the other element. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how many people are there, if we want to buy a sheet pizza, it's going to cost 30 bucks. So, that's where the levy comes in. We're setting the levy, and the levy growth is the amount that we need to cover. The, how it's distributed, that's where it gets really complicated because we need to understand what new buildings have been built, how the reassessments have done, et cetera.
That gets to be, I guess it's about 10% tax cap, and yet I know there was a goal for it, but really.
Right. So, when it was first implemented six years ago, the 2% number was kind of a misnomer. It was never, it has never been 2% exactly. It's been lower, it's been higher, it's never been on 2. Some years, we started a very low cost of living increase. Couple years ago, we started at less than one, less than one-half of 1%. Some years, we started a higher cost of living increase, then the exemptions and the other portions of the, for the tax cap kick in. So, it's never been 2%. It never will be 2%, and it's going to be different from district to district depending upon the circumstances of where people live. So, we're fortunate to live in a town where assessed values keep going up. That's good for people when they sell their house. It's maybe not so great when you're trying to determine what school taxes are. Yes, sir?
The teacher retirements, what was another, 22?
22 teachers, yes.
Are we there, or anticipating what's typical?
Three to four.
Really?
Yes.
These are people that accepted a package or something?
Well, yes, they received an incentive for their promise to retire as of June 30th this year.
So, could we assume that anybody else that's thinking of retirement would sign up for that, so there would be any surprise?
Pretty much, yeah. If you were going to retire, this was the year.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
So, I just want to say one more thing. We have presented that system on the Scott O'Leary.
Yes.
The best Scott O'Leary was only 33% one year. The Jeff E. stays on our taxes for every year after. Probably not a long year.
I agree, but so far for the past five years, every dollar that people have paid in increased school taxes has been rebated in that same year.
The other increase?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean, Ms. Corcoran.
It basically, it defers.
So, $100 a year.
Yes.
You have to rebate the year's $100.
Right.
You get that $100, it's easy to get, so.
Right. Your bill stays the same, that's right. Got it.
So, basically, in the first year, it deferred the increase, and then it's kept it a year out. Yes, correct.
That one was the governor's idea, Ms. Corcoran. I won't take credit for it.
Well, I know. I know.
Any other questions? Thank you. That concludes the report. Mr. Fuchs.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks.
Mr. Fuchs, we do have somebody who would like to address the board briefly, it's not a budget issue.
Okay.
You can take it right off the top of the floor.
I think I'm okay. Yeah, I'm okay. Well, I'm still a little bit, but, okay. Hi, my name is Helene Sanders, and I'm very proud to have been nominated by the Williamsville Central School District to serve on the BOSI's board. I'd like to talk to you about community. You're a school district within a town, within a county. As it is said, it takes a village to raise a child. Allow me to explain that. Most citizens don't know where to go when they have a community issue, and maybe the BOSI's board itself, which is part of a county, is great in assessing resources, accessing, I'm sorry, that's what I meant, accessing resources, but the component school districts need to know how, as do their students. We need a society of engaged citizens. When the town of Amherst applied for a grant, which I later received for sidewalks along Casey Road, the Williamsville Central School District should have been a part of that. If a student is injured by a vehicle walking home from school, the school, the school district needs to respond, as do the town and county who regulate traffic. When there is a cellular dead zone near a school, and you know your kids can't text you in an emergency, or vice versa, you need to know to go to your town board to ask for improved cellular service. I was not afraid to go to elected officials and ask them to restore funding for Sunday hours at Clearfield Library because the component schools in the Williamsville Central School District no longer wanted to pay for it. The town and county are now sharing the expense. When there was community input in Amherst about a hotel near the North Town Skating Rink, I, as a hockey mom, been in lots of rinks, whose son plays for Williamsville North and the town of Amherst, wrote a letter making suggestions to improve the rink itself. One problem was that there was no central viewing area for all the four rinks. Now, there are four TV screens showing what's going on on each of the rinks, as well as new chairs and tables. We are not teaching our students how to do these things. I know that because I serve on the Williamsville North shared decision-making team, and we are working on ways for students to do community service before they are required to in their We want an engaged citizenry. We cannot have that until we better educate our kids about how to access government. As I've said before, it takes a village to raise a child. I hope we now understand that. This is the knowledge I can bring to the BOSI's board, how we can be a community able to ask for resources. If you, if you have any, sorry, I'll ask if you have any questions. So, again, I'm Helene Sanders, and I'm from, I'm from Williamsville, and I'm number four ballot.
I was going to ask, so we'll be voting in mid-April, correct? April 16, 17?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you for putting out that on the floor.
Board have any other questions? All right, well, then I'll need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the potential discipline of an employee. If I could have a motion. By the second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.